Good morning, everybody, and welcome to the meeting of your Los Angeles City Council. Today is Wednesday, the 30th day of April in the year 2025. My name is Marquise Harris Dawson. I serve as President of this council. Public comment will be taken in person.
Mr. President, can I call item number 18 special for an amendment?
All right.
But proud to be joined by what is now officially the Majority Female Council of the City of Los Angeles. And we're here to, we're joined together in solidarity to stand up against victim blaming by ensuring that our voices are heard.
Good morning. Which items would you like to speak to? Oh, can we make sure?
Hello, hello, hello.
We can hear you.
Okay, well, I want to speak to the Gene Day one, the proclamation, and I don't know the numbers. I'm just gonna go and, but I want to do public comment, too. It's on the agenda, the Gene Day thing, and if you're gonna act like a patriarchy, whatever, not let me speak on it, then shame on you.
You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment.
And don't forget, you still owe me an apology because you got me off topic the other time, and I was on topic, and I'm still waiting for my apology, Mr. Groot.
Can you hold her time? I believe I apologized before, and we also gave your time, but to the extent that I didn't, I'm sorry.
You did not.
Go ahead.
Thank you very much. That means a lot to me. Okay, I want to talk first on the Gene Day. I love that the women of this council are, you know, standing up against sexual violence. I will not sit here and tell my own story because I'm not, I don't really come to talk about me. I come to talk about the abuses of Scientology. And I don't know if you guys are aware, since you're helping victims, that there's a case right now going on in L.A., okay, about a child bride who Scientology forced to marry her sexual abuser to cover up the sexual abuse. So as the women and everyone's wearing jeans, can you please also focus on changing the laws where children cannot be brides? Very important, okay? And how many people have come here, spoken here, or police commissioned, saying, "We're victims of, we've been sexually abused, raped, groomed at Scientology," and it falls on deaf ears? So as these wonderful, as you all stand up here fighting for, you know, victims, please remember, there's people here coming here every single, like, what, three times a week to talk about victims. I know, my minute's over, I gotta move on. I get it. Okay. About the randomizer, though, I know Smoke and Scan and I both want proof.
So, general public comment. You're welcome to do so during general.
Okay. And the next one is the Hollywood Walk of Fame one, okay? I don't think we should give Mr. Gervais, no offense to him, he can be really funny, but like, I am, right now, I would rather see real-life people honored. Okay, what about people who fight for victims? Okay, what about victims? How about the victims of Scientology? What about people who do real things and make a real difference? Like, just, you know, "Oh, I'm funny, and I get famous, and I make a lot of money." Like, what does that rate? Like, we need to start changing our, I think, focus on what a hero is, okay? It's people that really make a difference. And I'm curious on replay if Smoke and Scan agrees. We'll see. You know, we don't always agree, but I think we agree a lot. But anyway, the next one is, oh, about the law firm one. I'm concerned because you're trying to hire this lawyer, and he's a big, you know, lawyer for land use stuff, but Scientology has hired Bill Delvec as a lawyer, and I'm just concerned about conflict of interest, and I would ask that you please make sure there's no connections or ties, and that anyone that needs to be, you know, signed up for, you know, whatever. I'm just concerned about that because there's a lot of shenanigans going on, and I don't like it. And I know Smoke and Scan don't like it either, that I know. Is this my public comment?
Yes, general public comment. Go ahead.
Smoke and Scan and I want to know about the randomizer, okay? We want to know about the randomizer. Is it that you put our names in a basket and pull it out? Is it like some little computerized thing? Is it a figment of our imaginations? Does it really exist? Because there needs to be accountability and transparency, and we want to know about the randomizer because there's too many, like, yes, I'm glad, you know, like, there's times if I don't get called, that's ridiculous. I want to know about the randomizer, all right? And I know Smoke and Scan does, too. Right, Smoke and Scan, you want to know about this alleged randomizer, okay? But I'm wasting my time on that. I've spoken again and yet again on the victims of Scientology and also the abuses of the public, of their system of permits. I told you that I'm about to sue the city because I have yet again been restricted, and you guys keep giving them permits in spite of their civil, continuous civil rights violations. Please stop doing it. Thank you.
Si, soy miembro de ACE y estoy aquí para pedirle por favor que apoyen las demandas de Keep LA House para actualizar Larso.
I am here as a member of ACE to ask you to approve what is being asked of you by Keep LA House in terms of Larso.
Al presidente Harris y a la concejal Heather Hutt.
To President Harris Dawson and Councilwoman Heather Hutt.
La semana pasada tuvimos un tanjo y no se presentó ninguno de ellos. Es una pena que no hayan podido ir ni su staff.
The last week, we had a town hall, and it's a shame that neither you could show up or your staff.
Más de cien residentes se reunieron.
More than a hundred residents got together.
En su distrito.
In your district.
Y exigimos que actualicen Larso. No nos decepcionen que ustedes y sus personal no pudieron asistir, escuchar a los inquilinos en su distrito.
And we urged you to accept Larso and were devastated, and were sad that you couldn't show up, you or your people, to listen to your constituents in your district.
Como constituyente, me gustaría hablar con un diputado, si, del distrito ocho y del distrito diez, sobre las demandas de Larso y entregar peticiones de sus constituyentes.
As a constituent, I would like to speak to someone from District 10 and District 8 to mention the demands that we have in terms of Larso.
Okay.
Les pido que por favor lo hagan lo más pronto posible. Gracias.
I'm asking you to do it as soon as possible. Thank you.
Good morning. You have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Please begin.
Come on, man. You don't even ask my name. That's weird. Okay, let's start with on the denim item. I'm really happy to hear about the denim item because I was sexual violence when I was a kid. Because when I was one years old, my father was violently taking a shower for me, and he was touching me all over for 20 minutes, nonstop. That, I didn't give him my consent, but however, I was violated every day until I was the age of five or something. That's more than 1,500 days of sexual violence. When I report to the LAPD, nobody take my report. And then, I'm glad our council member Hernandez talked about this Sexual Violence Day, and I can assure our council member Hernandez that every rapist will stay 100 feet away from you. I'm pretty sure that she is very intimidating, you know, when she ever faces any sort of
You've exhausted your one minute on this item. You need to move on to another item.
Sexual violence. Item number 40. Item number 40 is some sort of enforcement against the sitting, sleeping, storing, maintaining, placing personal properties on the, on the street. Okay, so I want to ask our city manager, that, our city attorney, that if I am homeless and then somehow, sitting on the street, sleeping on the street, will end me up in jail, so I want to ask our city attorney, where do I go? So if I don't have a home, if I don't have a toilet, and I use the toilet on Figueroa Street, but somehow you have this kind of rule right here that will jeopardize me, that will end me up with a citation by the LAPD, will end up me in jail by the LAPD, but I have nowhere to go? I told you, I knock on your door, can I use your bathroom, but you denied me? So I want to go to the hotel, I want to use the toilet, they denied me, so right now you're asking me that I'm gonna get arrested for sleeping on the street, so where do I go? Now, let's move on to item number 43. Item number 43 is about World Wish Day. Yes, city attorney, I have a wish. My wish is that every time you can select my name randomly, guaranteed. So World Wish Day, I have a wish that in the future, whenever I go to Figueroa Street for Figueroa services, I will not get a randomly selected Figueroa prostitute to giving me services. I want, I want my services provided by the specific Figueroa lady, not randomly selected Figueroa lady. I have a wish that in this city council, you will no longer discriminate me on my ability to speak public comment simply because I have a three-inch size.
General public comment.
Now, let's move on to general public comment. I want to continue to assure this Sexual Violence Day. With some woman, I understand, this is a huge concern, but I want to assure our Council District One that no man want to ever stand anywhere near you 100 feet within your distance. So unless there's a violent rapist has a size of 100 inch, so I want to make sure, assure our Council District One that you have no concern, you have no worry about this sexual violence for the rest of your life. You are so safe simply because the way you look.
Speaker, you are now being repetitive. I'm gonna ask that you, you can continue your general public comment, but-
I will continue to this sexual violence, that right now, we have sexual violence on Figueroa Street every single day. I spoke on Seguroa, Figueroa item every single day, and then our city attorney continued to use a random, randomly selected method to provide services to randomly selected Figueroa prostitute.
Speaker, your time has expired. As we wait for the next speaker to come up, I know there's a lot of new faces here. If it's your first time here, just recognize that during public comment, people express their views in a lot of different ways. It is, I wish I could say that that is the worst thing that you're going to hear today, but it very well might not be. Keep in mind that the Brown Act does not require you, members of the public, to listen to the other speakers, so if you have headphones and you would like, you are more than welcome to put those on. You're also welcome to take a stroll outside, look around City Hall, and come back at any point during this meeting. Thank you.
So, my name is Skylar. I work with Sage and District 2, and I'm giving general public comment. I'd like to request that you please support Keep LA House demands for updating the Larso ordinance. Larso is an incredibly important law, but its current allowed rent increases are too high for Angelenos. We have hundreds of petitions here demonstrating Angelenos' support for an update. I urge the city council to adopt Keep LA House demands for the Larso formula, to cap increases at 60% of CPI with no minimum increase, and remove unfair additional increases for utilities and extra occupants. During the rent moratorium in the City of L.A., the rate of evictions were down, and now that the moratorium has ended, even with the current Larso protections, evictions filed in the city are similar to the numbers prior to the protections, prior to the pandemic. So I'd like to request, along with my colleagues and members of the community, that stronger protections are passed.
Hi, my name's not that important. I'm from District 8. I'm the president, actually, of District 8 for ACE, and I'm here to talk directly to my, our council district president, Marquise Harris Dawson, and to Heather Hutt as well. We had a council, we actually had a town hall meeting recently. We were really disappointed that no one showed up to represent your offices. This is super important. We have people who are actually being put out of their homes because they can't afford these rent increases. So we're asking you to support Larso, Larso, L-A-R-S-O, Larso. Cap the rent at 3%. We need this help. My rent is going up every single year. My neighbor's rent is going up every single year, more, 10% or more. This is not affordable. So I'm here to say, please support Keep LA House demands for updating Larso. Council President Harris Dawson, last week, I already told you, we had the town hall. It was really disappointing. Over 100 people came. This is some things we want to really give to you today.
Speaker, your time has expired. Please, can you take this? If you'd like to, if you have any documents to provide to the council, you can provide it to the sergeant, but your time has expired. We have to move on to the next speaker. One minute, go ahead.
You got it. I'm Mrs. Sun, constituent in District 8. Good morning, Marquise. Good morning, everybody, council members, that I've been having meetings in the last six months around Larso. I'm happy that I met with Bob and we were able to talk about some conversations. I'm happy to talk to Nita Ramins and Odo Yunises and Hugo Soto every other week, and it's really, it's really refreshing to hear that. But like Dorcia said, Marquise, it is a little upsetting when we are door-knocking close to 400 doors with Sage and DSA and clergy, like Pastor, Dr. Pastor, there's Harris Dawson Davis, the pastor of the church that we had the tanjo. He was pretty upset. I'm not gonna lie, Marquise, we respected somebody, somebody to at least listen to this constituent's issues that the rent is too damn high, that some of them don't have toilets to use, some of them don't have electricity sometimes, and then out of all that, we don't see somebody from our district, so get it together, man.
Hi, my name is Veroni Catorres. I am from District 8, and I'm here to give a comment regarding capping the rent at 3%.
En mi caso, yo he sufrido hasta el 40% de aumento, por eso estoy aquí para pedirles de favor que, que nos aprueben, nos urge, porque ya va a ser para julio este el aumento.
I'm personally here because I have suffered a 40% increase in my rent, and that is the reason why I'm coming to give this comment, and I'm asking you to please approve this because we really need it. Thank you.
Good morning. I believe just general comment.
Okay, and before you begin, feel free to move the microphone if you need to. Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Hello, council members and community members. My name is Michaela Scales, and I'm a resident of Council District 1, living in the MacArthur Park area. I'm also a graduate student in the Masters in Social Work Program at USC, and most importantly, I'm a mother to a two-year-old son. I'm here today not just as a student, but as a mom who is deeply concerned for the safety and well-being of her child and all families in our community. When I need to walk to run everyday errands, whether it's picking up food, stopping by the post office, or just walking to the corner store, my son and I are forced to walk in the street of my residential block because the sidewalks are completely blocked, tents, scattered trash, and drug paraphernalia cover the walkway. There have been moments where I've had to dodge broken glass or step around used needles while trying to keep my two-year-old safe. This isn't just an inconvenience, it's a public safety issue, and it's unacceptable. I want to be clear that I have compassion for our unhoused neighbors. I know that people living on the streets are often struggling with mental health, addiction, or economic hardship, but this situation puts both residents and unhoused at risk, and it's not humane for anyone, especially not children when our sidewalks are becoming impossible.
Mi nombre es Lucina Abad, y estoy aquí para apoyar la demanda de Keep LA para actualizar Larso.
My name is Lucina Abad, and I am here to support the demands for Keep LA House.
Mi comentario público es referente al porqué los concejales, mi maquin y la señora Hutt. Tuvimos un foro, señores. Creo que la comunidad merece un respeto. Esperamos que nos escuchara. Su comunidad necesita de ustedes. Queremos hablar acerca de la demanda de los aumentos de renta.
So I'm here to give a public comment directly to Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson and Mrs. Hutt. We had a community forum, and we deserve the respect of you being there and listening to the needs and the wants that we have regarding Larso.
Pedimos que ustedes se pongan en los zapatos de los inquilinos, que a veces tenemos que pagar la renta en vez de comprarnos una comida decente.
And we ask you to put yourselves in our shoes as tenants, where we have to make the decision of either paying the rent or having a good meal.
Espero una solución de parte de ustedes y apoyo para toda la gente, para que todos aquellos vivíamos en paz en la casa.
And we hope to get a solution from you and some sort of support for the people that want to stay housed.
Que por falta de un hogar vayamos a parar las calles. Necesitamos su apoyo.
Because without housing, we're gonna end up on the street, and we need your support. Thank you.
Yeah?
Now?
Buenos días a todos. Mi nombre es María Sánchez. Soy de organización de ACE y soy del distrito nueve.
Hi, good morning. My name is María Sánchez. I am from the organization ACE, and I live in District 9.
Estoy dando comentario público general.
And I'd like to give a general public comment.
Les pido por favor que apoyen la demanda de Keeping LA House para actualizar la de Larso. Es una ley incrementada importante, pero sus actualizaciones aumentan de alquiler permitidos con sus demasiados altos para los inquilinos. Y yo como madre tengo un hijo de educación especial y estoy conviviendo con familiares porque no alcanzo a pagar la renta porque es demasiado alto.
Un momento.
Y queremos su apoyo.
Señora Sánchez, un momento. So I'm giving a general public comment to ask for you to support the Keep LA House demands and to support and update the new Larso formula, because this law is incredibly important because the increases in rent, the annual increases, are way too high, and I personally, I have a child that has special needs, and I've had to live with family because I can't afford to pay the rent on my own.
Y tenemos que aquí cientos de participaciones de sus contribuyentes a favor de una actualización. Los aumentos máximos es del 60% del IPC o el 3% sin aumentar el mínimo y eliminar los aumentos adicionales injustas para los servicios públicos y los ocupantes adicionales.
And so, we had over 100 attendees that have, and constituents, that have shown that they are in favor of this update to the Larso formula, to a 60% of the IPC index without any additional percentages for utilities or additional occupants.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Mi nombre es María Vargas, y estoy hablando sobre esto que está afectando a toda la comunidad que tiene bajos ingresos por el incremento de renta que están haciendo ahorita el 10%. Me gustaría que hubiera la posibilidad que lo mantenga a 3%, porque incluso los apartamentos que supuestamente están controlados se están subiendo el 10%. Como para mí que yo tengo 70 años.
Señora Vargas, un momento para que le pueda interpretar.
Okay, sorry.
So, good morning. My name is María Vargas. I am here to talk about something that is really important to the low-income community, which is in regards to this allowable 10% increase to our annual, to our rent annually. And I would like there to be an opportunity to have just a cap at 3% that includes apartments as well and other areas that have rent control. Adelante.
Go ahead.
Por ejemplo, para mí que me dan mil dólares de retiro, y la mayoría tengo que pagar 956, ¿cuánto me queda para pagar luz y gas y comida?
And so, for me-
Porque me aumentaron el 10%.
For me, I receive $1,000 in retirement income.
De anticipación.
Okay, so can we hold her time really quick? So I'm gonna ask this. I'm gonna ask the interpreters, feel free to hop in if we need to ask the Spanish speakers to pause every once in a while, and if I can have you make this announcement to the room one more time. If you require a Spanish-language interpreter, please make sure to pause every few sentences so that the interpreters can actually interpret.
Bueno, momento, tengo que dar un anuncio para toda la sala. Si ustedes requieren un intérprete de español o inglés, por favor, no se olviden de dar una pausa después de cada frase para permitir la interpretación.
We want to hear what you have to say, and the best way to make sure that that happens is to pause so that the interpretations are accurate.
Queremos escuchar lo que tienen que decir, así que la mejor manera de poder hacerlo sería dar una pausa después de cada frase para que podamos escuchar la interpretación.
And don't worry, just like now, the time is paused, so you will get the same amount of time as everyone else.
Y no se preocupen, como ahora hemos dado pausa a su tiempo, así que va a ofrecer la misma cantidad de tiempo que los otros comentaristas. Gracias.
Go ahead.
Entonces, señora, voy a empezar a interpretar lo que usted acaba de decir, que es que usted recibe mil dólares de jubilación y que tiene que pagar la renta que es de 956. Un momento. I'm gonna start from where she last left off. I receive $1,000 a month in retirement, and my rent is $956. There is no room for me to even pay utilities out of that amount. Adelante, señora.
Yo solamente les quiero decir que así como nosotros, la comunidad, nos damos nuestro voto a todos los políticos, así que los políticos traten de ayudarnos a la comunidad. Gracias.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that we, as community members, are the ones that are voting for our politicians, so we're asking for our politicians to help us and to support us. Thank you.
I would like to speak to a public-
Okay.
-comment.
You have one minute. Go ahead.
Yes. I prefer especially to direct my comment for everybody, but this is special for Heather Hutt. I'm from District 10, and I want, first of all, to please help us with Larso, and we really need it. And I'm very disappointed about the 23, Wednesday 23, meeting that we have, and she never showed up, never came over with us for that appointment. So that's very, for me, it's unprofessional, you know? Please, Larso is very important to us. Housing, we need your support. Like you guys, when you're on our vote, you have it. Thank you.
Mi nombre es Tomasa Martínez, pertenejo al Distrito 14. Soy miembro de ACE.
My name is Tomasa Martínez. I am from District 14, and I'm a member of ACE.
Por favor, apoyen las demandas de Keep LA House para actualizar a Larso. Presidente del Consejo, Harry Dawson, la semana pasada, más de 100 residentes de LA se reunieron en su distrito para exigir actualizaciones a Larso.
And so, I am here to ask for you to support the Keep LA House demands and to update the Larso formula. I would like to say to the council president, Mr. Marquise Harris Dawson, that last week, we had a meeting with over 100 residents. Y adelante.
Nos decepcionó que usted y su personal no pudieron asistir y escuchar a los inquilinos en su distrito.
You and your staff were not able to come to this meeting and to listen to the concerns of the tenants.
Solamente necesito que apoyen Larso, ya que del 2020, mi dueño del departamento donde estoy me ha querido sacar. ¿Se imaginan ustedes si quieren terminar con los hombres, cuándo van a terminar con personas que estén viviendo en las casas, en las calles? Pónganse las pilas y pónganse a trabajar, por favor. Gracias.
So, we're just asking you to please support this updated formula, because in 2020, my, the owner of my, of the apartment where I live was trying to get me out of the house, and just imagine the amount of people who are in their homes now to end up in the streets, and we're already having a crisis for homelessness. So I'm really asking you to get to work and to start supporting this ordinance. Thank you.
Good morning, everybody. I wish that all council members pay attention to us as we are speaking, because as I can see, everybody is involved in their own conversations or whatever else. We invited Mr. Marquise and Heather Hutt to a town hall, and none of them showed up. We haven't heard any, I'm sorry, I could not attend. We must be respected as well as we respect you. We give you the support, we give you our votes, and we give you our voices, and- We give you the support, we give you our votes and we give you our voices and they are not heard. We want you to support Larso. The changes had to be changed, we need them right now. A lot of people is gonna end up on the street. We are the second city in the whole United States with homeless. We don't need anymore. We need those changes now, not tomorrow, not tomorrow after, not next year or 20 years from now. We need them now and we need their support and I hope you guys do listen to us. We are your supporters. Without our support, you would not be here. Thank you.
My name is Elez, can I start? My name is Elez Edes Hernandez, I'm an organizer with ACE and I would like for every single council member here to actually pay attention because what I'm seeing is that you guys are taking this time as a freaking break. This is not your time to have a break. This is when you guys are supposed to be listening to these people back here, but all I see is conversations all over, talking to people who you're not supposed to right now, you're supposed to be listening, you're supposed to be hearing these public comments. Marquis and Hunt, these people walked their asses off, walking those streets to get that town hall together and what did you guys do? You guys didn't show up. There was none of you guys, there was nothing from you guys. And you can laugh all you want, Mr. Marquis, it's great. That is amazing that you take all this as a joke, but just remember, when people is voting, they're not gonna get you the vote.
Good morning, which items would you like to speak to?
General public comment.
Okay, you have one minute, go ahead.
Yes. My name is Matthew Carson, I am a part of ACE in the 8th District. Councilman President Harris, we greatly appreciate your attention and we would like to have you to listen to us because the rent is too high. And we were all together, we have over 100 residents that gathered and signed a petition. We need the 3% rent increase. I'm disabled and I just got an increase of almost $300 on my rent. I cannot afford this and we need you all to really help us because otherwise we're going to be another part of the homeless population that you're going to have to deal with and we don't wanna be homeless. Thank you very much.
Next speaker.
Hi, my name is Manny and I'm with Sage in District 2, but I live in District 14 and I'm giving general public comment. So please support Keep LA's demands for updating the Larso. Larso is incredibly important law, but its current allowed rent increases are too high for Angelenos. We have hundreds of petitions here demonstrating Angelino's support for an update. I urge the City Council to adopt Keep LA House demands for the Larso formula to cap increases at 60% CPI or 3% with no minimum increase and remove unfair additional increases for utilities and extra occupants. I'm grateful that I live in a Larso-protected apartment and I love living in my neighborhood, but with the current rent increase rates, I'm afraid that I may not be able to afford to rent where I live. Everything is becoming more expensive and having large rental increases every year is not sustainable. This update on Larso is common sense and will ultimately benefit all Angelenos. We need to update this immediately. Thank you.
Hi, City Council, my name is Joel Chuning. I work as a civilian employee of the Los Angeles Police Department Evidence and Property Division.
Good morning, and which items would you like to speak to?
This is a general comment, sir.
General, go ahead.
I just wanna comment, it kinda ties in with what you guys were speaking to earlier. I appreciate all your support. Some of the things I handle every day are sexual assault kits, robberies, murders and homicides. I'm an expert at what I do and I would really hate for these positions to be cut along with a criminal forensics team because these items will not get handled in time. The officers' wait times and drive times will be greatly extended, the chain of custody will not be there and it'll raise the legal liability for the city, but more importantly to me, this is a great city. I wanna make sure everybody's safe, your constituents are safe, and I wanted to continue to serve the city of LA as a member of the LAPD, as a civilian employee. Thank you very much.
Good morning, City Council members and community members. My name is Krista Figueroa and I am an Evidence and Property Officer. I'm a uniformed civilian. I work for the civilian workforce for the city of Los Angeles for LAPD. I am here today and I stand in solidarity for all of the sexual assault victims. As an Evidence and Property Officer, I have a huge responsibility. I book all evidence for misdemeanors and for felony crimes. Those crimes include sexual assaults, rapes, sex trafficking, murders, and I stand here today to let you know that there are 17 property officers, three supervisors, and one officer in charge that is all on the potential opportunity of layoffs. We have a critical role in our chain of custody from sworn officers that bring in all of the evidence for these heinous crimes and we book that evidence and we preserve that evidence so that our officers, our detectives, and our district attorney can go to court and put these people away, these monsters that commit these crimes. Please help us, help you.
Speaker, your time has expired.
All the members of the community that have voted for you, we support.
Speaker, your time has expired. Again, we have to give everybody about the same amount of time.
Good morning, public servants. My name is Brendan Fisher and I live here in Council District 14. I'm here to advocate along with Keep LA House in support of their demands to update Larso. While it's an incredibly important law, it's ultimately outdated and right now the allowable rent increases are far too high. And so I urge the City Council to adopt Keep LA House demands for Larso formula to consider the cap increases at 60% CPI or 3% with no minimum increase and to remove the unfair additional increases for utilities and extra occupants. In the context of general economic uncertainty and the budget cuts and layoffs, this represents an opportunity for the City Council to give back to its community and reduce the economic burdens on an already rent-burdened city. Therefore, I strongly encourage you to consider these demands over the coming months. Thank you.
One minute.
Adelante, tiene un minuto.
Mi nombre es Eloisa Galindo, soy miembro de ACE.
My name is Eloisa Galindo and I am a member of ACE.
Hoy estoy aquí para pedirles a todos ustedes que pasen Larso, un tope de renta.
Here I'm asking you all to pass the Larso rent cap.
Cuando nosotros hablamos del capitalismo es algo muy lógico. Si ustedes ven los edificios que parecen de edificios hermosos ahí, en el centro de Los Ángeles.
What we have been saying about capitalism is actually quite logical. If you look at those beautiful buildings that they have in the center of Los Angeles...
Esos son del capitalismo, de muchos que han pagado la campaña, de muchos de ustedes, por eso es que les hace difícil escuchar a la comunidad y pasar Larso.
Those are a product of capitalism. Those buildings are there, built by the people who pay your campaigns. That's why you guys don't wanna hear us when we talk about Larso.
¿Dónde está el señor Lee que es el que más está poniendo peros para pasar Larso?
Where's Mr. Lee who's putting more and more obstacles in the way of passing Larso?
Uno de los problemas serios es que ustedes no saben que muchas homeless mujeres están siendo abusadas sexualmente todos los días.
One of the serious problems is that you don't recognize that it's homeless women who are being sexually abused day after day.
Esto es un problema muy serio, los desalojos y la falta de vivienda accesible.
This is a serious problem, the lack of affordable living spaces...
Es tiempo de que ustedes en verdad pongan leyes que protejan a los inquilinos.
This is important and it's time for you guys to really put forth laws that protect renters.
Pasen Larso y no estén jugando con los intereses de los inquilinos.
But I'm gonna ask the interpreters to interpret the last portion, please, go ahead.
Pass Larso and stop playing around with the interests of renters.
Good morning, Django, all items and general public comment.
Good morning, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general public comment. Before you begin, your time has not started. I wanna make an announcement to the room. So, as you saw earlier, people expressed their public comment in various ways. I suspect that some of these comments are going to be very offensive. So again, if you have brought headphones, if you'd like to put your fingers in your ears, you, the members of the audience, do not have to listen to the other public commenters. You can if you'd like, but just be warned that I expect there to be offensive content here. Go ahead, you have three minutes for the items and one minute for general.
That's right. So let's get on to number 33. Oh, my timer's up already, shit. That was quick.
Hold on, your public comment has not begun until the timer starts. We're trying to get the timer started. Mr. Spindler, do not disrupt this meeting, I am giving you instructions. This is not your public comment because the timer has not started yet. You will get your full time if you abide by the rules of this council. This is your first and only formal warning, do not disrupt this meeting. Okay, go ahead.
Item 33.
Go ahead.
I am, I'm on item 33.
So, Mr. Spindler, if you would not like to provide public comment, then you do not have to do so.
The government cannot compel me to speak, sir. First Amendment Coalition says I can do this. I'm silently protesting item number 33.
We go to the next speaker, Mr. City Attorney.
Uh, Bob, you know how much lawsuits cost, right? This is, not today, Bob, not today.
You seem to be off topic, so we'll move you to general public comment.
Excuse me, I'm silently protesting item number 33. I am protesting it silently and I'm gonna use sign language, sir.
Can we start the time for general public comment? I'm not sure if this is gang signs or what.
I'm doing it with gang hand signs. I'm publicly protesting number 33, I am on topic. Mooney Cow, I'm on topic. I'm on topic. I am protesting number 33 in my own selected content of speech, sir. So please, put my time back on the clock, sir.
We have not stopped you, you are still on the items, so stick to the items.
Okay, good, because you got a different-looking clock than my three minutes. You took away two minutes and 22 seconds of my goddamn time. Please put me back on the items, sir!
I just confirmed with the clerk, we did not reset your time. Stick to the items, or I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
I didn't even use a minute.
You've been asked politely, I'm gonna move you to general public comment.
I'm trying to speak.
You have one minute for general public comment, go ahead.
I'm on the items, sir, I got two more minutes. I have two more minutes on my items, sir. Right? Right, Mooney Cow, don't I have two more minutes before general, right?
And before the one minute of general public comment begins, I would ask, the quickest way to get through this is if we do not disrupt it. So, again, I appreciate your continued patience with this. Go ahead, you have one minute for general public comment.
Yeah, you got my continued patience.
Mr. Spindler, you have been warned, do not disrupt me giving you instructions and trying to provide you your time for general public comment. Go ahead, you have one minute for general public comment.
Give me back my time on my items. I still got two minutes on the items, sir, where's my other minutes? I said all items and general public comment, where's my time? Oh, look at you there, big shot. Look at you. Your house is perfectly clean, isn't it?
Mr. Spindler, you address the council in general and not specific members.
That's good, because let me tell you something, okay? You robbed me of my two minutes on my items, that's $10,000 per minute. You illegally put me back on general, another $10,000. But I have very good news. Did you know that Current Price does not recuse himself correctly and that could possibly land him back in prison? Did you know that? Stay tuned, motherfucker. Stay tuned, the fun is gonna fucking begin.
Thank you again, everyone, for your patience.
A good day, general public comment in Spanish. Tiene un minuto, adelante.
Mi nombre es Irma López, soy miembro de ACE y estoy aquí para pedir que apoyen las demandas de Keep LA Housing.
Hi, my name is Irma López and I am here to urge you to pass the demands from Keep LA. From Keep LA House.
Para que apoyen la ordenanza de Larso pero que la actualicen, tiene más de 40 años que no está siendo actualizada y no nos perjudica a todos los inquilinos.
I want you to support Larso but to update it. It's been more than 40 years since it's been updated and it's not correctly supporting us renters.
Pedimos que la actualicen con el 3% de aumento de renta porque ahorita hay muchos incrementos que no se pueden pagar por los inquilinos.
We're asking you to pass it with a 3% rent cap because the rent keeps going up and it can be paid by a lot of the renters.
También pido que se eliminen aumentos injustos adicionales de servicios públicos y ocupantes adicionales.
I also ask that it not be permitted to increment due to services and/or additional occupants.
Apoyen las demandas de LA Housing para Larso, por favor, las comunidades lo necesitamos.
Please support the LA House demands for Larso, the communities need it.
Estoy aquí hablando por los inquilinos que no han sido escuchados.
I'm here speaking on behalf of the renters that have not been heard.
No queremos ver las calles con más homeless, no queremos familias desplazadas.
We don't wanna see families evicted, we don't wanna see the streets with more unhoused people.
Escuchen a su comunidad, gracias.
Listen to your community, thank you.
General public comment, please.
Go ahead, you have one minute.
Thank you. My name is Lena, I'm here with Sage as well as this wonderful, powerful group of tenants. Again, speaking in support of an update to the Larso formula. I'm in District 13, but I work with tenants across the city who are fighting illegal and/or extreme rent increases, trying their best to avoid falling into homelessness and stay in their housing, but they need help. They need this law to be updated, which hasn't been updated in over 40 years. It's time to make Larso fair for tenants and cap the rent at 3%. We need the rent formula to be based on 60% of the Consumer Price Index with a cap of 3% and no floor. We have so many tenants here today expressing their support of this, we have hundreds of petitions, we've had the opportunity to turn them into council members for District 10 and District 8. For District 2, we have a set of petitions here that we'd love to pass over if a deputy could come and get these for me, that would be greatly appreciated. Tenants, support updating Larso, thank you so much.
Mr. President, that concludes public comment.
All right, thank you to everybody who came and spoke with us today, thank you for your input to our process. Mr. Lee.
I'm happy to second that amendment to my amendment. Colleagues, you know, I'll quite often that you hear in the valley that we are forgotten, that we provide the most tax base and that programs like this constantly remove the ability for us as council members to put these safety measures within our district. We're talking exactly right, Councilman Blumenfield, we're talking about two locations, I get two locations a year. Under this next formula, I will get zero. I will get zero every year and I'm just asking that we try to make it, it's a, we're talking about two. If you fully fund speed program later on for $15 million, if that gets programmed, I have no problem with this, but as it's funded now, it's two per district. So I'm asking, I'm asking you, I'm asking the Valley council members to remember that, to hopefully fight for the Valley and fight for our fair share of the resources that the city, that the city has. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilmember Roman.
The amendment Blumenfield Lee, which is to add to the existing transportation report, items 1 and 3 of 18A.
I think, Madam Clerk, we just voted on item 1 as amended by Mr. Blumenfield, so we took care of that. So now we have item number 3.
Okay.
And we want, and I think the...
And we want, and I think the idea of this is to add this to the Transportation Committee report, not substitute it for it.
Correct.
Got it.
Foskey, 14 members, and a court, Mr. President.
Mr. City Attorney?
Yes, Mr. President, while there is nothing to report out of closed session, there will need to be a motion for council to take action.
Councilmember Blumenfield has moved. I'll second.
Okay, then, Mr. President, council may vote on the motion to adopt the City Attorney Report dated April 14, 2025.
All right, let's open the roll on that item, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 knives.
All right, what's next?
Council has motions for posting a referral.
They are posted and referred?
That clears the desk, sir.
Announcements, members, announcements, all right? Seeing no announcements, I'll ask everyone in the chamber to rise for adjourning motions, and before adjourning for an adjournment, all right? Councilmember Jurado.
I would like to be recorded as a no vote for item 40, thank you.
I, I, is that possible, Madam Clerk, given we posted and referred already? It seems like it's not.
I'm so sorry.
I can change the vote to, now that I located the vote, Mr. President, it is possible, because the meeting has yet to adjourn, so the change would be, Councilmember Jurado would be like the no, and for the record, item 40 is 11 yeses and four noes, and the motion still passes.
All right. Now I'll ask if there are adjourning motions on either side of the horseshoe, seeing none, we're adjourned, thank you so much, everybody.